Summary of what the options to council are.
We have a public hearing and now we decide to concur with the board.
Thank you. They can just be received or if they want to pull it off.
It's like four years.
Yeah, that's what I told them because I figured we got officials reports. We've got you got to go through the rest of the agenda. Yeah. I just hung out about 20 minutes. She was kind of in the face. So like just probably.
By the way, I'm ordering a flag for Mr. Drysdale's office from the Beverly Hillbillies to give.
It's now 6:30. The March 15th work study session will begin. We'll start with official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As a follow up to our last meeting, the $5 million ARPA funding that we applied for from Wayne County was approved by the commission on Thursday, March 2nd. Our project was the second largest awarded in the county during this round of ARPA funding. It's important to note that ARPA funding is only awarded to projects that meet the program requirements and specifically assist in communities with COVID recovery. These funds will be used to construct a new public park and pedestrian bridge at the corner of Trenton Road and Cambridge. This project will complement the $46 million private investment in the redevelopment of the former PNC tower and increase recreational options for our residents. It will also provide more walkability and connectivity between Quantis Park and the new public park. I want to thank Wayne County Commissioners Joe Palomera and Al Hadis for shepherding our proposal through the ARPA subcommittee and the full Wayne County Commission. I would also like to acknowledge my executive staff for working through the county processes. It was a very extensive and time sensitive endeavor. The process began under the tenure of former city administrator Dustin Lent and was successfully concluded through the leadership of Dan Marsh. I also want to appreciate the unanimous support of city council to bring this project to fruition. $5 million is an incredible amount of funding and certainly something we could not have achieved through our general fund or even our parks millage. Groundbreaking for the new park is scheduled for later this summer. Speaking of the county, Wayne County Executive Warren Evans will be presenting his State of the City address next Tuesday, March 21st. The event will be held at the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center on Michigan Avenue in Dearborn. Doors will open at 5:30 PM and the address is scheduled to begin at 7:00. This is a free event, open to the public, but online registration is required. Those interested in attending may register at Eventbrite, one word, Eventbrite.com. The 2023-24 municipal budget approval process will begin on Saturday, April 1st with our annual budget workshop with city council. The workshop is open to the public and will begin at 8:00 AM. The next step in the process will be a public hearing on the budget, which will take place on Wednesday, May 3rd during the regularly scheduled council meeting. Public questions and comments are welcome before and during the public hearing. Then on Wednesday, May 17th, the 2023-24 budget will be placed on the council agenda for final approval. I'd like to thank all of our department heads for their work on the budget and to our finance director Doug Drysdale for assembling and preparing that information. Once again, the administration is pleased to be presenting another balanced budget for the council's consideration. Copies of the proposed budget should be available to council by March 24th. Please contact Mr. Drysdale if you have any questions prior to the April 1st workshop. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
No report. Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
No report. Thank you.
Councilman Rauch?
Yes, I just have a couple of things. The kids Easter egg hunt, which is April 1st, is at noon. That will be at Market Center Park. And then the adult one, the hoppy hour egg hunt, which is going to be held at the golf course, which is 21 and over. It's $10 to register. There are limited spots and you can register at www.southgate.com. And last but not least, our new golf course, golf carts arrived today in the city. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Goss.
No report.
All right, lots of cool things happening in schools related to technology. The school board approved a robotics trailer for our Anderson High School robotics team. We also got a PLC troubleshooting learning system for the Anderson Mechatronics CTE class so that students will be able to get their hands on things that they can use in the real world and troubleshoot that way. Councilman Colovas?
Thank you. The, the, sorry. The Public Safety Commission meeting met tonight at 4:30 and the police reported, and it's just amazing that here we're a smaller bedroom community sort of, that the calls for service was 1,471 for the month of February. Reports were 327, accidents 62, citations 423, and there were 38 arrests made in the month of February. The fire department reported they had fire incidents of 123 for the month of February, EMS incidents 384. For a small city, 30,000 people, quite active, and that keeps our civil service, they're doing a great job covering so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ayers Reese?
No report today. The planning committee could not meet. They did not have a quorum, so I'll be reporting next month.
Thank you. All right, I'll give it over to Mr. Marsh for the agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. Under Communications A, the first item is for the reappointments of Mary Lamos and Helen Love Day to the Library Commission with a term expiring April 2026. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's appointment of Mark Nemeth to the Plan Commission for a term expiring December 2025. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none. Next, we have a request for a public hearings to be set for the regularly scheduled council meeting on May 3rd for the Southgate Wine O and M and the water and sewer rates. One note, the memo I sent to council there does indicate that it's for the July, or that the rates would take effect July 2022. That is a typo. These rates would take effect July 2023. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. The next item is a request to reschedule the public hearing that was originally scheduled for today regarding the Clean Water State revolving fund loan for the Barbary Relief Sewer Project. Eagle informed us that this particular type of loan, for this particular type of loan, the public hearing requires a 15-day notice rather than the typical 10. So we are requesting that the public hearing be rescheduled for the council meeting on April 5th. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none. The fifth item under Communications A is a request to affirm the recommendation of the dangerous buildings board and to authorize the demolition of 16133 Eureka Road. The recommendation from the dangerous buildings board was discussed at the public hearing regarding the property at last, the last council meeting. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. The next item is regarding the recommendation of change order number two for the DPS Underground Storage Tank Project. The change order is in the amount of $34,420.65 to TSP Environmental Services. This change order will close out the project. The additional expenses are a result of the need for excessive de-watering of the project site, which also caused the need for additional pavement to be removed and replaced. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. The next item under Communications A is the recommendation for change order number one for the Allen Road Water Main Linings Project. This change order is in the amount of $111,582.41 for Fur Pal Construction USA LLC. The change order will close out the project. The additional expenses are a result of unforeseen underground conditions, which caused a series of additional work items. Those items are detailed in the letter provided by Mr. Miller from Hennessy Engineers. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. The final item under Communications A is the recommendation to extend the contract with Highway Maintenance and Construction Company for the 2023 Spray Patch Program. The contractor has proposed a 4.11% increase from the prior year's cost. That 4.11% increase is directly tied to material costs. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Under Communications B, we have two receive and file items. The first is the appointment of Robert Beaver to the Public Safety Commission for a term expiring April 2024. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. The second receive and file item is a recommendation from the Compensation Commission. Per the city code, it is the responsibility of the Compensation Commission to determine salaries of local elected officials. As this is a receive and file item, this does not require a vote of approval, but it would require a two-thirds vote to reject the recommendation. The chairman of the Compensation Commission is present with us today if you have any questions, but I do also understand that Mr. Batera has another commitment at 7:00 PM. So if there's no objections from anyone in council, we request that he be able to leave for the regularly scheduled meeting.
Are there any questions from council for Mr. Batera? All right, seeing none.
Okay, that is all. Thank you.
With that being the last item, we'll reconvene at 7 o'clock.
It's now seven o'clock. The March fifteenth council meeting will come to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman George and Councilman Zemeckie are excused. Councilman Ayers-Reese?
Present.
Councilman Roush?
Chair.
Councilman Clovis?
Present.
Councilman Graziani?
Present.
Councilman Casper?
Here. I need a motion to approve the work study session minutes dated March first, 2023.
Madam Chairman?
Person.
Councilman Roush?
I make a motion. We approve the work study session minutes dated March first, 2023.
Support.
Motion by Roush, supported by Clovis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes dated March first, 2023.
Madam Chairman?
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion. We approve the regular city council meetings dated March first, 2023.
Support.
Motion by Roush, supported by Ayers-Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Last, I need a motion to approve the public hearing meeting minutes dated March first, 2023.
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Clovis.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve the public hearing minutes, meeting minutes dated March first, 2023.
Support.
Motion by Clovis, supported by Ayers-Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. There are no scheduled persons in the audience. There's no consideration of bids, and there's no scheduled hearings. The first item under Communications A is a letter from the mayor regarding appointments to Library Commission. Madam Clerk.
Please be advised that I have made the following appointments to the Library Commission for a term expiring April 2026. Mary Lamas and Helen Love Day. Your concurrence on these appointments is greatly appreciated.
It's a pleasure of the council.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion. We approve the, concur with the administration and approve the appointments to the Library Commission expiring April 2026.
Support.
Motion by Roush, supported by Ayers-Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next is a letter from the mayor regarding appointments to Pl-
Make a motion that we adopt the mayor's appointment to the Planning Commission being Mr. Mark Neemuth for a term expiring December-
And motion carries. Third is a memo from the administrator regarding request for public hearings for South-
The administration is requesting the city council schedule a public hearing on Wednesday, May third, 2023 for the South Gate Windout operation maintenance, and a public hearing on Wednesday, May third, 2023 for water and sewer rates. The May third hearing is required in order to entertain views and comments from interested individuals regarding the special assessment costs associated with the South Gate Windout operation and maintenance and capital improvement charges. The May third hearing is also required in order to entertain comments from interested individuals regarding the proposed increase to the water and sewer rates to become effective July first, 2023. Your favorable consideration in this matter is therefore-
What's a pleasure of the council?
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion. We concur with the administration and set a public hearing for Wednesday, May third, 2023 for the South Gate Windout operation maintenance capital as well as the water and sewer rates.
Support.
Motion by Roush, supported by Ayers-Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next is a memo from the administrator regarding request for rescheduling public hearing Clean Water State revolving fund project for the Barbary Sewer. Madam Clerk.
The administration is requesting a resolution to reschedule the public hearing regarding the Clean Water State revolving fund loan for the Barbary Sewer relief project from March fifteenth, 2023 city council meeting to the April fifth, 2023 council meeting. CWSRF loan, public hearings have a fifteen day public notice window. That window will be achieved with the public hearing being held on April fifth, 2023. Your favorable consideration is requested.
What's a pleasure of the council?
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Clovis.
I make a motion that we reschedule the public hearing regarding the Clean Water State revolving fund loan for the Barbary Sewer relief project from March fifteenth, twenty-three council meeting to the April fifth, 2023 council meeting.
Support.
Motion by Clovis, supported by Ayers-Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next is a memo from the administrator regarding the demolition of 16133 Eureka Road. Madam Clerk.
During the March first, 2023 city council meeting, a public hearing was held regarding the demolition of 16133 Eureka Road. The administration recommends the council affirm the dangerous buildings board recommendation and make a resolution for the property to be demolished. Your favorable consideration of this matter is appreciated.
What's a pleasure of the council?
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion. We approve with the administration and the Dangerous Building Board recommendation for the demolition of the property at 16133 Eureka Road.
Support.
Motion by Roush, supported by Ayers-Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next is a letter from the mayor regarding change order number two for DPS Underground Storage Tank Removal and Replacement Project. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the city engineer, and I concur with his recommendation for this change order in the amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-five cents to TSP Environmental Services, Inc. There is no contingency recommended as this is a balancing change order to close out the project. Adequate funds are available in the major street funds. Your favorable consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated.
What's-
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Clovis.
Thank you. I make a motion that we adopt the change order number two for the DPS Underground Storage Tank Removal and Replacement Project in the amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-five cents to TSP Environmental Services, Inc.
Support.
Motion by Clovis, supported by Roush. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Next is a letter from the mayor regarding change order number one for Allen Road Water Main Linings Project. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the city engineer, and I concur with his recommendation for this change order in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-one cents to Free Pal Construction USA. There is no contingency recommended as this is a balancing change order to close out the project. Adequate funds are available in the water and sewer funds. Your favorable consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated.
What's a pleasure of the council?
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion. We concur with the administration and the change order for the Allen Road Water Linings Project in the amount of one million, one hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, forty-one cents to Free Pal Constructed USA LLC.
Wait, said a million.
You said a million.
Was that one million that you said?
Oh, I'm sorry. One hundred thou- I'm sorry. I was trying to give someone else a chance, but then I'm like jumping because no one said anything, so I apologize.
So, motion by Roush. Any to support?
Good ear.
Support. Motion by Roush, supported by Ayers-Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Last is a letter from the mayor regarding contract extension with Highway Maintenance and Construction Co. for 2023 spray patch repair program. Madam Clerk.
It is recommended by the city engineer, and I concur with his recommendation to approve this contract extension at a four point one one percent increase to the prior year's cost with Highway Maintenance and Construction Company for the 2023 spray patch repair program. Adequate funds are available in the major and local street funds. Your favorable consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated.
What's a pleasure of the council?
Madam Chairperson.
Councilman Clovis.
I waited for a minute, anyway. I make a motion that we adopt the recommendation by the city engineer and concur to approve this contract extension at a rate of four point one one increase to the prior year's cost with Highway Maintenance and Construction Company for the year 2023 spray patch repair program.
Support.
Motion by Clovis, supported by Ayers-Reese. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. There are two items under Communications B to receive and file, the first being a letter from the mayor regarding appointment to Public Safety Commission, and the second being a memo from the Compensation Commission regarding elected officials' compensation. I'll entertain a motion to receive and file.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion to receive and file.
Motion by Roush, supported by Ayers-Reese. Any discussion? Objection? Receive and file. There are no ordinances. Is there any old business the council would like to discuss? Seeing none, is there any new business the council would like to discuss? Seeing none, are there any unscheduled persons in the audience that would like to address council? Seeing none, we'll move on to claims and accounts. Councilman Graziani.
With this council approve warrant one four six nine in the amounts of seven million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and seven cents.
Support.
Motion by Graziani, supported by Roush. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chairman.
Councilman Roush.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Roush, supported by Ayers-Reese. Any discussion or objection? We're adjourned.